Unfortunately, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Approval of the agenda, we have a couple of things to add tonight. Need to add a railing quote for the stairs coming from our upper parking lot. They're putting down to the town hall. We need to add a letter of interest for funding for the emergent contaminants at the transfer station. And I'd like to add a discussion about reports from our commissions and committees. I'll make a motion that I accept, that we accept the agenda as amended.
I'll second that.
Okay, and I'll add those railing quote eight A, but under the skateboard ramp. The reports can go. I guess they can go as eight B. And the letter of interest. We can probably put that down with the twelve A. Is that discussed? Is that all right?
Mm-hmm.
Yep. Perfect. Okay. Do you want any public comment? And public comment is going to be limited to three minutes as usual. Any public comment?
Um, I know our butter to one twenty seven Pro Hill Road where the post town was going to be. Just a couple of papers to get to here on this. Couple extra that just. Um, so as you know, the new documents came out on August twenty second were uploaded to the P P P U C. Um, so tonight, um, I'm asking the board to respond to the most recent documents filed by the petitioner on August twenty second. The town's earlier comments do not address these new changes, which raise many new questions. Um, would you please submit an updated letter that maintains the town's recommendation to deny the site if it agrees? That step allows my family to continue raising necessary questions while the town has standing on critical issues, um, including coverage safety, I only have standing on aesthetics. As you know, the C P G, which is the, um, certificate of public good is based on whether there is a substantial public benefit that outweighs the undue adverse effects to my family and our future here in Pro Hill and Powell. Silence from the town at this stage does not count as denial. In fact, it risks being interpreted by the developer as an approval, which it sounds like it's that direction based on the new documents. Here are a few specific questions that remain unanswered. Why was the new F, uh, new R F propagation map modeled with an antenna central line at ninety-three feet? When the actual design places it at eighty-nine feet, uh, which gives them a better reading, even though it's a shorter distance, it's that four feet makes a big difference when you're behind the mountain. How was the visual map prepared, given that the developer states there is no view from my property? Something that is plainly untrue was those board members who came to my house know exactly where to be pointed and where it would be. It's B C. I question the accuracy of the maps. How can the butters, the Wilkersons, who are not notified of this product at all for over eight months, they expected to weigh in now? About anything without, even without a balloon test. They missed the first two and after so many changes, moving the tower, changing the height, um, I'm not sure how we're all supposed to know.
Sorry.
That's okay.
My father's calling.
So it's supposed to evaluate the new location without a new balloon test. Uh, again, I asked the town to request an updated house, but we understand what the only government. Um, and I was wondering if the town has been briefed on the first net program because did some research. It's become, I've become aware that there's subscription fees involved in that. I mean, the town has to pay that to subscribe to First Net, so I recommend what's into that. Lastly, the developer himself stated the shortcomings of a shorter timer in the June twenty-sixth town meeting. He said the telecommunications act allows companies to put it at a height where it actually provides service. So when you're reducing the height so much that it's only twenty feet above the tree canopy, it doesn't provide the service and it doesn't cover the things in the town the provider is really trying to provide for the state. That was the developer himself. The original project was a hundred and ninety foot tower. The new design is nearly half that height. With such a drastic change, it's reasonable to expect the developer to reexamine other more suitable locations that offer more substantial coverage. When you, if you haven't looked at the documents yet, when you compare the, um, original R F propagation map to the one, you can see substantial change in coverage.
Tonya, you're at just about three, three minutes.
Okay, that's fine. The rest of it's written on here.
Okay.
Um, overall, I respectfully ask you to continue denying this site so that a better solution can be negotiated. Um, right now, this proposal, if you see about this easiest for the developer and not what's best for the town. So I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I have any other public comment?
Yes, my name is Kenneth Brock. I live at seventy-two Murphy Lane. Uh, my concerns is with the cleanup of the Bates property behind me. Uh, Lucas Baker's caused sixty-three rats. I caught one rat because I had rodent detectors around my house. It's turning into a hell hazard without place back there. From what I understand, he was given a thirty day cleanup. Now he's into an extension. He is not cleaning nothing out of there. Nothing has been coming out of there. And neither the town does something or we're going to reach out to the EPA. We're going to really bring in some heavy hitters. And it's not going to be perfect because that place has been for forty years. We know there's oil and gasoline in that ground back there. You know, uh, somebody's got to do something and the drug addicts are running in and out of there. And I almost lost my cookies the other day. You know, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna lose my freedom because of these people. So something needs to be done with that property. Blackout. And I'm not the only one. It's been like forty years he's been doing that. Nobody's done nothing. It's horrible. And, you know, in the future, if I want to sell my property, nobody's going to buy my property without back there like that. No way in hell. Something has to be done. You can't just sit back and just turn a blind eye to it like that. It's been there for forty years. You know? I've lived here often on for the last sixty years myself. And it's horrible. And it's got to come to an end. Like I said, the only reason I don't have rats is because I have rodent detectors around house, solar powered rodent, uh, rodent detector. But Lucas has killed sixty-three rats. And they're coming from back there. And, you know, last year, as you know, he burned his own trail down because I put dips in the road. And he keeps complaining about that. You know, I'm not blocking the right way. But I'm making so they have to slow down. They're driving thirty and forty mile an hour down the road. I have a dog this big. I've got kids. I'm not going to put up with it. I'm done. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I have any more public comment?
I actually have a quick question. I'm sorry. Where did you say, which road are you on again? Where do you live?
Seventy-two Murphy Lane. I live right behind Lucas.
Okay. All right.
And then they live in this.
All right.
Off of Dean Road.
Oh, okay. All right.
I mean, it's horrible. It really is. You know, when I, when I first came back, I told him, I would help you clean out back there, but I'm to the point now, I'm not helping with nothing. You know? You can, it's all you can do is offer help. And when it gets to this, it's, it's too far.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Anything else here? Anybody online? No one? Don't hang it up? No, the public panel approval of minutes. Minutes of August fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of August fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five. This is an important meeting.
I'll second that.
Any discussion, changes? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Minutes of the Board of Health on August fourteenth.
Uh, I'll make a motion that we accept those.
Do I have a second?
I will second that motion.
Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Warrant counts payable August twenty-second, twenty-three thousand, one hundred and thirty-five dollars and fourteen cents.
I'll make a motion to accept that warrant.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Counts payable August twenty-ninth, eighty-one thousand, seven hundred and eighty-five dollars and sixty-four cents.
I'll make a motion that we accept them.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Payroll August twenty-second, eleven thousand, six hundred and fifty-eight dollars and sixty-eight cents.
I'll make a motion that we accept that payroll for August twenty-second, two thousand and five.
I will second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
August twenty-ninth payroll, eleven thousand, eight twenty-one, sixty-nine.
Make a motion that we accept the payroll of eleven thousand. Yeah, we accept the payroll as Mike said.
I'll second that motion.
Eleven thousand, eight twenty-one, sixty-nine.
All right.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Skate park ramp donation from Williamstown, discussion impossible action. Did everyone?
Yes.
Read that?
So just so the public is aware, we were offered these skate park ramps from Williamstown, Massachusetts. Um, they're getting ready to upgrade like Williamstown did to concrete. Um, and I've been working with Parks and Rec as well as Cliff Dayton to sort of see what's appropriate for our size park. And, and we're kind of ready to, um, work out with logistics of moving them as long as the board is, uh, giving us their blessing to accept the donation.
Quick question. So that's at no cost to the town?
Um, I believe so, yes, because we have volunteers to move them. So that would be the only cost.
That sounds like some of those ramps are in better shape than some of the ones we have right now. So that would be an upgrade and safer and.
Are they wooden ramps or metal?
They're metal.
That's a big difference.
Yeah. Oh, I, I think that's great. I think.
I think it's great.
I think it's just a benefit.
Um, we'll, we'll defer to Cliff because he's kind of our expert as far as skate parks go. And he can sort of say which ones should stay and which ones should go.
Okay.
Frank, get here.
I was just gonna ask that. Cliff's involved. I saw that and which is great because, oh, he was the initial.
Yeah, he's done.
Right along with this. So I'm happy to see him involved in that whole operation. That's kind of his wheelhouse. What's the board's pleasure?
To move, I would.
Move forward.
Yeah, move forward with that.
I don't know.
Any emotion or no?
Any emotion for that?
Can we just get an update on that, too, if it turns out for some reason it's not feasible or he's not? Yeah, but it sounds great.
We need a quote for a railing on the new stairs.
So we got a quote from J V Steel. He's the, um, same company that did the railings out back and up front here, uh, for the railings on the stairs that go up the embankment. It would be both sides of the stairs. Um, we've used him many times and I basically am just coming to ask the board that we use him again because I, it, when I requested art of money to put towards that, I had already gotten a quote from him and planned on using him. So, um, I'm hoping that you'll give me the blessing to do that. It's for four thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars to get that done.
And that doesn't require a public bidding process, right? Because the amount.
Um, there's a, in our purchasing policy, there's a sole proprietor or a sole. If you can only find like one main person to do it, or the board just has the discretion to allow me to. I can collect quotes, however, because we've used him and he.
Yeah.
They're, they're gonna match what we have here. He did these railings here. He did the railings down there.
And it's the same price per linear foot.
And as I recall, the last time we did get a quote, there, one came out substantially more expensive.
Yeah, and it, yeah, yeah.
Bring my back.
I'll make the motions. We move ahead was getting to, we got the quote, so it's just a movement motion, right? Go move forward with the, with the rails.
Complete the work.
I second that motion.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And that is true with the sole proprietorship. We don't have to, we can, like with a bid for salt or, or gravel crushing or whatever, if we've used a contractor, um, an outside contractor or vendor, we don't need to move to get a quote. We can just.
Policy basically makes it says, make sure you get the blessing from the board at the end of the day.
Yeah, yes. Um, the next thing is reports. I think, uh, I'd like to receive a report from, um, I know the rec park gives us one periodically. Concon, I believe, gives us a report periodically about what's going on in these two emails. But I'd like to add, I'd like to see a report from our commissions and committees. I like to see it once a month of what they're working on and what direction they're um, heading in, in what they're.
Do you wish it written or do you want?
I'd like to see it written or at least an email.
And I do, just so everyone is aware, I do at the beginning of every month send out an email for updates from boards, commissions and department heads. Um, I rarely get them from highway, often wastewater, you know, our department has a pretty good about it, but the boards are kind of here and there.
So I'd like to, I'd like to request that.
Do you want to make that as a motion, Mike?
Yeah.
Then it's official.
We're gonna make the motion.
That we were, we're requiring that the boards give us a monthly um, update on what they're working on.
So that looks like the next a month from now, give them a month to get it done, right? A month from now would be the September twenty-fifth board meeting.
I think also it could be sufficient to just send an email. Like, I don't want people make up saying, oh, nobody's gonna do that. You know what I'm saying? Like, you don't have to come up with a ten-page report. Like, if you really, here's what you're working on. There's nothing need to report. Great.
Right.
Let us know.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I like that. That's helpful.
But we should be, we, we should be, I agree with Mike. We should be turning around and getting these reports so that we know what they're working on. Because right now, I, I'm not really familiar with Com-Cons work. I don't know what planning's working on. So I don't, if we had like a monthly where they sent us and says, here, we're working on this, this and this. And this is what we have worked on and that type of stuff.
And that's a good opportunity if, if direction is, if you think there's other things that they should.
Right.
Sure. Also be working.
Right. If there's something we think they should be working on, it gives us a chance to fairly direct them. Have a motion that I had, do I have a second?
Second that, sure.
All in favor? Return check policy discussion impossible action.
Ellen found a typo that I corrected. Other than that, was there any comments?
Nope.
This is just a, a policy that's kind of duplicative of other towns.
It just seems very straightforward. It's an easy policy. It's no big, there's nothing controversial in it.
I'll entertain a motion to approve it.
I'll make that motion to approve the check return policy.
I will second that motion.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Cost system contract from Land Records Management, spirits renewal discussion impossible action.
I do have questions about this, actually. Mike. I mean, I went through every page of the contract. That's fine. That's not so much. But I do know that Julie has some concerns about it. It sounds like she's not entirely happy with it. Do you know what those concerns are? I had texted her and I don't think that she necessarily has got a scan.
Oh, I think, um, sometimes if there's trouble finding documents or they weren't put in the, not the right way, but the way Julie would have put them in, so then she can't sign them in the system. So there's a lot of gaps sometimes. And I think that's one of her main concerns is that, uh, came here and scanned a lot of our documents, but she feels like some of them are still missing.
So does she feel like they're non-responsive if she reaches out to them for customer support?
I'm, I don't know. I think you should ask Julie. I would rather, yeah, I, I don't want to speak to.
Okay.
Not really sure, but I do know she has concerns because sometimes there's a lot of technical issues that arise and it can be frustrating, but I'm not sure exactly what are concerned. Then the, um, yeah, I'm.
When is this? I don't remember the date when this contract is up.
Not until.
It's a little while, right?
November.
Yeah.
I think we should bring Julie in and have her speak to this because I think she's the one that works with it on a daily basis, not us. Not, not him, not Tara.
I agree. I think.
Before we do anything, I'd like to hear Julie's.
Yep.
Um, take on what's going on with it.
Okay.
I have heard plenty of complaints to myself from Julie.
Right.
I can't pinpoint.
But I don't want to, yeah, I don't want.
Right. I don't, I, I'm not, I'm not gonna pinpoint. That's her.
Even discuss it in executive.
Yeah. Yeah, because it, it is contractual.
Concerns, yeah.
Mm-hmm. It is contractual. So I think that's definitely an executive. Will come out and either yes or no, right?
Right.
It is, it is a contractual thing, so. Um, let me just check my schedule. Our next meeting is the eleventh.
Yes.
I won't be here the eleventh. Not that I have to be. I'm just giving everybody a heads up that I, I will not, I'll be in Florida on the eleventh.
We have the H B presentation that day. Maybe I'll ask her to come.
The twenty.
End of September.
Twenty-fifth.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I will be in Chicago for work on the eleventh, actually.
I'm at a wedding and my stepdaughter is getting married in Florida and I'm walking down the aisle on the twelfth, so I'm gonna be in Florida.
Thanks, Florida.
Yeah, during hurricane season, game in. Lucky guy. I'd like to float away. So let's ask Julie to come the twenty-fifth on that.
Okay, that sounds great.
Any more discussion I have with you, right? Uh, old town hall committee, continued discussion, possible action.
Okay, so I brought this back because I wasn't here the last time and because I wanted to kind of clarify some things and, and discuss another option that I sort of learned about today. Um, I attended a symposium, a building municipal owned building symposium today um, with the Southern Vermont Academy project and it was great because there was a lot of regional partners there and things like that. And I really kept hearing about feasibility studies. And when I talked about Powell maybe starting a committee, they said, you know, what is your charge? And then when I started saying like, oh, we're gonna come up with options. It's who's the expert that's really going to ma- determine what the feasibility is. Um, so then I started thinking, maybe it would be a better option to find a contractor or an architect, an engineer that provides a service of a feasibility study that can look at what it's gonna take to fix the building or what it will take to demolish the building and sort of look at those, look at all the options and what it takes. And then when the committee starts working, they have a clear picture of what they're working towards. It also removes the emotion from it. Um, if it's a third party person, they don't have all the emotion that many of us have uh, when it comes to that building. So I'm not saying I don't want to do the committee. I'm just thinking that maybe we slow down and um, appoint people at a later time. Once I can see is a feasibility and study an option for us? Can I find funding for it so that we don't have to ask tax for that money? Um, I can work with a few of the other regional partners I know today. There's many nonprofits that do, um, community outreach, town visits, and they can help us do the public outreach and really build a good committee and do this process the right way with, with experts. Thoughts?
I, I will say, I do personally like the idea of a feasibility study, particularly if we can get that funded other than taxpayers, so that we don't start a committee, which of course, like we talked, this would be open. And folks who are interested would be able to like tweet periods and the interest and that we could do that. But like, before we get there, it probably would be very helpful to have an idea, what are the actual costs? Because I feel like any suggestion that is made, whether it's print to something else, tear it down or fix it up and sell it. We are always gonna get the question, and how much is that going to cost? So I think that that is probably a very good idea before we create a committee. If we, if there's a way to do it that is not immediate, because that's not realistic, but a bit sooner rather than later.
Yes, it's still. I still really would want the focus to be community focused.
Yeah.
Um, so I don't want to give the impression that we're moving away from that. I just want to make sure that we're prepared and not meeting and having lots of people come and just not really accomplishing anything.
Right.
Because we can all say what we want to do, but do we know what is feasible? What it's gonna take to get there?
I think it's.
Well, I think, I think a feasibility study probably should have been done a while ago, right? And so we have, and I think, I think a key piece of the feasibility study is try to find the funding or find the funding for it so that we aren't chasing good money after bad. If we can, right? And, or at least we have to know how much.
I didn't talk to him, yeah.
At least we have to know how much we'll get, how much we're talking about, right? If we're talking a thousand dollars to do a feasibility study, well, you know, but if we're talking twenty-five thousand dollars to do a feasibility study, there's a whole, there's a wide range, right?
Yes.
Right?
Yeah, and I, yeah, and I would come back with how much the feasibility studies.
Exactly.
My plan to pay for it is.
Exactly.
Not asking for your blessing with anything like that.
But.
Yeah, I'm just.
Right.
Is it reasonable to come back, like, say, our first meeting in October with an idea and estimate of how much such a study would cost and like what the options might be to get funded?
And yes, and which agencies.
Yeah.
Could help us and not, yeah. I have a much better plan.
Right. And, and I think that's, I think that's, I think that's a starting point. I think as far as this committee that we are talking about forming, I think it would also give them a much better idea of what an outside person, like you said, that doesn't have a, an emotional attachment, right?
Yeah.
And I think, I think the way we have talked about setting up the committee is, is the way it needs to be set up, right? I think we have, we have a select board member. Okay, and I'm gonna be, I'm gonna come right out right now and be a hundred percent honest. I think Jeannie is the select board member that needs to sit on that committee. Because she doesn't have an emotional attachment um, to the, you know, one way or the other. At least she hasn't expressed it, right? Where.
No, I do not, actually. I don't have.
The rest of us have expressed an emotional attachment, one way or the other, the, the board members. Not that I couldn't, not that I couldn't, you know, go one way or the other, right? If it, whatever's the best. Because that's, because that's what I do. It's best for the town, right? I, and I think, I think Tara, you being on that committee is, is a good idea. And I think then we, so we do our diversity study or our feasibility study, not diversity, sorry. I was thinking ahead of myself. And then I think we open up that, once, once we form a committee, I think we, these are my ideas of how to form this committee. Okay, we send out a request for applicants. The board designs specific questions for applicants. Every applicant gets asked the same exact list of questions. Right? Because, because that's just the fairest way to do it. Because if you're going to come up with, correct me if I'm wrong, if you're going to come up with whatever the best solution is for that building, the, the diversity has to be on that committee. If you have fifteen people and eleven of them want to keep it and four don't, you're not coming up with the best solution. Right? You're just not gonna.
There's also often a disconnect between the select board makes the decisions, but we work here every day. So it is really essential to have myself or, or him or someone on that committee.
I agree. I agree.
Wait, because we know the ins and outs of this building and we know what happens every day and just the logistics of things.
No, I agree with that, you know, and I think, I think at that point, then, then we ask for applicants and we see how many we have. And then we certainly as a board can.
Do we do it similar to the, we come up with.
Way we done it with, um, when you were on, when you first came on Tom Con?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Where we, where we said, we give them an application, they fill it out? And then they'll commit for an interview?
Well, I think, I think we, however we do a call, we give them, we can give them the list of questions ahead of time, or we can bring them in and sit them down. I mean, I'm not talking, you know, you're not talking to Bible with them.
I ain't saying that.
You're talking five questions maybe or whatever you come up with.
That's fine. Right, but I didn't know if you wanted that part of the.
I, I.
They, they could, you know.
I think.
You put your application in, here's the questions we want you to answer, and then you bring them in and now we can talk about.
And, and, and that's fair. That's fair. Because give them a chance to, give them a chance, rather than on the spot, answer your questions.
Correct.
Give them a chance to come up with. Give them a chance to come up with a really good answer or, or an answer that they have time to think about. Rather than sit here in fifteen minutes. But I, I also believe that I want that. I want that personal. Interview. Not just handing your answer to your questions, because. I think eye contact and. Emotion and things, really sometimes. You can hide a lot on a piece of paper. That you can't hide when you're sitting across from, from people asking you questions. Does that make sense? Yeah, I know, does that, I, I, I'll get to, I promise, I promise. Yeah, I saw, I, I promised that, I'll get there, does that? You got, and does that make sense?
Yeah, I think that's a really good idea.
I have a couple of things I just wanna say, I'd love to take the word emotion out of this conversation, it's not about emotion. It's about decide, you know, coming up with ideas to do, what to do in this building, I don't, I don't ask for anyone who's emotional about it. So I, I just don't love that word to be taken off the table. And I'm not gonna go any further with that, because there. The only person who's shown emotion. Has not been. And so, and the other thing is, I. In my recollection, wasn't there a discussion about getting a lawyer to say what was actually legal to do? And I don't think we've heard any response, I, I don't think we've gotten a response to that, so I don't know if it's been followed through on.
I think that's actually, I would just say a very valid, there is a lawsuit right now and we need to wait.
Okay, but I mean. This is promised. And. Now this feasibility, that I think the feasibility is a great idea, but I think we also have to get the legal.
Well, I think part of that feasibility study should be that legal.
I think some questions are hard to answer right now because of that.
I mean, but you know, that was talked about months ago, so I just think that means.
Well, then the lawsuit, there's some things, so I think, I, I think everybody's right here, I think we need to pull back a hair.
The only thing I've seen emotion about is this church, and I couldn't care less about that. But I have not seen any emotion about town.
So I think, you know, I think we pull back, I think we, we go, we get some numbers on a feasibility study. Right? And then we, and then we can move forward. And I, and I think all of our ideas, okay, I think the committee, I think going through that, because then we get communities, community input. No one can come back and say, oh, you didn't have community input, yes we did, we had fifteen people sitting on a board or a committee, right? And it was a very diverse committee, that's what, that's what our goal should be. Is a, is an extremely diverse committee, okay? And, and then let them. Come up, not that their recommendation is gonna be written in stone, but let them come up with an idea and a recommendation, because that's what we're tasking them with.
I would say that a committee needs to come up with a. Bunch of options, the select board needs to, this committee doesn't make. We should come to you with recommendations, this should be an advisory committee.
Here's our recommendations, one, two, and three.
And then I think once the select board thinks about it, then it should go to a town vote. And then everybody gets, and you can give the one, two, three options that the select board decides. From the, you know, whatever, however many options you get from the committee. And then you guys put it on the ballot and you put this, 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 I mean, it might even just be. Taxpayers pay to do something with it and if taxpayers don't, you sell it, it might be that those two.
It could be that simple.
But, but you can't, you can't put that kind of responsibility on the committee to make a decision, but that's not. It is your decision, it's not a committee's decision, so I just wanna. Sure that everyone's on the same.
I don't think anybody envisioned the committee making the decision.
I could have been misleading. Good, I think we're good with that. Thank you. Thank you, Jamie.
Thank you. Have a good plan going forward.
Have a good evening. Town Home Cemetery bylaw discussion and possible action. So there was some confusion, Mike.
Yeah, there was.
I just.
It's okay, but, but you know, it was something that didn't have to be done. Right then, so it's not, it's not a big deal.
And it gave time for me to get some other questions answered about buying flats back. Doesn't seem like something we really wanna get into. Unless it's the person who actually bought it.
Or, or, or if they're deceased still, then. It's whoever the probate court designates.
Yeah, I think there are ways to do that. That it doesn't get confusing, if we can have a, a legal paper trail. That's clear. If you have just someone showing up and claiming they have a right to that flat without any source substantiating documentation. Then we don't wanna get, it gets all sticky, but if it's very clear this person has. Rights to that, then I feel. Cause there are people who are going to want those flats and there are only so many of them. And it's better than, you know, committing a new.
And if we can, I mean, we, we can't purchase the plots back for. Only for the same amount of money. But if we purchase, then that gives us a night, that gives us a plot that we can. Sell to somebody that actually wants to go in there. But they have to have proper documentation.
A note from their mom, Carl?
What's that?
Not a note from their mom?
Not a note from their mom.
I think Jeannie has some.
Don't throw anything at me, but I do. I have a few questions.
It's a working problem.
And I am happy, and one thing that I could do also, that if I have questions, I'm more than, I didn't want to do this without. Coming to the board first. Going through these, I can make notes and then I'm happy to revise and bring. For everyone to circulate again. Depending on our discussion today, that way it's not, you aren't again, like. Having to revise these things, I don't think that that's fair, it's not asked you to do that, so.
There, it's easy if you send it.
Yeah, I can do that, we can just do it in a Google document.
But are they any myself?
There is one general prohibition that I do have questions about, I think they're all common sense, they make sense. But one of them is. A prohibition on using the cemetery as a picnic ground. And my concern about that are a couple of different things. Like. And maybe this is just weird, but I know that our family has had a practice in the past, I know others that, for example, on Veterans Day. To go visit their loved ones or ancestors. Family picnic, be close again, I know that for different, like faith traditions on All Souls Day, for example, it is not unusual. To go and sit down, have a meal, like, or just like a simple picnic, it's a way of being close to like. Their loved ones, so I don't, I can't imagine anybody going out there, and again, people could be required to clean up after themselves, just like they are all through this.
I think this was just one of those things that was on every single. Cemetery thing that I looked at, so it's just a copy and paste. I'm okay to hand off.
No, no, because I think, I think Jeannie had a really bad point, all right, I, I don't know if you would call it a picnic. So to speak, but I, I know. I know that personally.
We could just strike that one, actually.
Personally, I've gone and had, had my lunch. At my grandmother's grave. I've, I've personally sat there and ate, ate a sandwich. Down underground next to my grandma. I don't know if you call it a picnic, but. Whatever, you, you could. Right? And I, I would hate to limit. Somebody from being able to do something like that.
Yep, I did the exact same thing, what, what my grandfather's.
You know, and we can only, you know, in three, four, five years down the road. It can be changed, so that there's an issue, yeah. I think it's a good point. I missed that, so I'm fine, that's a great point.
I found it out because I had done it, just like you. The other question I have is like establishment of cemeteries, again, I know that we. Are, I don't like to reinvent the wheel any more than you do, I agree, I think that most of this looks great. They refer to like here under establishment of cemeteries. There is a reference to a town manager several times in here.
Just because we, we copied and pasted.
No, I totally get it, so I'm just, we can strike that. Another town manager, see?
Okay, I'm sorry.
And then, yeah, right, still in that. Okay, in that purchase of lots section, turn over. And it is the. One, two, three, fourth point. And it says, no transfer or assignment of a lot shall be made by any owner. Without the express approval of the executive assistant. So. Here's my question, and I'm thinking about this, the reason of. Not getting any executive assistant caught up with someone saying, well, this was done for me and not for me, like, could we have some guidelines?
Shouldn't that be because we're forming the cemetery?
That would be my next question, should this?
Right now, it's executive assistant because I'm doing it.
Right, but I.
Have a commission, it'll say cemetery commission.
Because we can, we can change it, we'll change, well, and we could go either or, we could put in there. Chairman of the, chairman of the cemetery commission or.
I wouldn't even go as the chairman, I'd do the cemetery commission, it's only three people.
Right, but you.
But I can't do that.
But, but she can't do that right now.
But in the terminology in this policy.
I also think that we could, we could do executive assistants. Or we could do even cemetery commission, or if no cemetery commission is available, the executive assistant of the town.
That's where I was gonna go with. Executive assistant until a cemetery commission is formed.
And I do think it's worth just thinking about a little bit. To figure out if we could be a bit more specific and have some guidelines, so that we've got, I would expect continuity. Of like, yes, you can or no, you can't.
Such as buying a lot or selling a lot?
No, transfer assignment of a lot shall be made by any owner without the express approval and sort of like, no, we sell lots.
Do you understand what the, that, the rationale of that is?
Right, no, I do, and I'm not, and I'm not saying that we shouldn't allow that, but what I'm saying is just, as long as it's very clear. What their guidelines are as to when they should or should not approve, that's what I'm saying.
Like you were saying before. You have to have express documentation from probate court.
And that's all I'm saying.
Purchase yourself. That those, those would be the guidelines.
A hundred percent, and I just think if we just spell that out a little. It gives you or anybody else protection from someone saying, oh, why wasn't that approved? Right down from that, I have a question that says. Corner markers. Will be purchased and installed by the executive assistant, are doing everything.
No, they, they will be purchased.
I'm a lot, because if you give corner markers to Joe Schmo and he goes to the cemetery and puts them in the wrong spot. Ten years from now, we have a cluster.
That's, that's why, that's why we charge. We should charge for putting corner markers in.
Right, I'm just questioning if there's anyone else who should have to take that on. Other than you, cause I feel like. I do too, I think a lot, I think. And I think this is important for people who are interested in being on.
But I think that, I think it's wise to keep the executive assistant in the loop, because. If for some, because the board is going to be elected. And there's no guarantee that. Those three members. Let's hope they're gonna be good members.
So, so I'm gonna back you up for a minute. All right, that cemetery commission board is elected. They report to the townspeople. They're elected officials. They don't report to the.
They just don't do their work, John.
We have to get them out, right, at the next election. They don't report to the select board. As an elected official, must be set it up differently, they don't report to Tara as the executive assistant. Julie doesn't, Ellen doesn't. We don't. An elected official.
You may, it's a good point.
We, we can say whatever we want, but an elected official doesn't report to anybody. But the voters of the town. And I, I see your point, I totally understand what you're saying, because who has control over?
But we don't.
We can't.
I am considering running for the cemetery commission because.
Then you would be at that point, the appropriate person, I think, to make that decision.
And just remember, if nobody runs for the position, we can't appoint anybody.
Well, yeah, we need people to run and.
Even if they run and.
Yeah, it's, it's this thing, yeah.
We can advocate.
Frustrating with that, but.
I think we can work on getting three quality people to run for this.
So here's what I would just propose then, there, excuse me, a couple of other places like that where I feel like the cemetery board should be making that decision. So what I'm happy to do is to reword that a different way, that it would be cemetery board or. And there is no cemetery board that's active, then we can go the executive assistant again. I'm happy to do that.
Did we ever come up with a fee schedule?
No, just the four hundred dollars.
Which actually I thought was very reasonable, it was.
It is, but I think that we've. I think if, if we're, if we're, if the. The cemetery commission or whoever has to go and put the corner park markers up.
That should be a fee that is, because.
Should be a requirement that the cemetery commission puts the corner mark in.
I just was talking about the, just talking about the fee schedule.
I know that, but it, it, it shouldn't even be an option. Are gonna put in by the cemetery commission or executive assistant in lieu of, right? And that's how it is, and there's a hundred fifty dollar fee to put those in. Just hypothetically, that's all I'm saying. There's no option to someone else do it.
Up the four hundred to five hundred. And it includes that.
That's fine, that's fine, either way.
I'm good with that.
I just, some towns, some towns add, some towns add the cost extra, some towns add it in. It just depends which way you wanna go with. I know way too much about frigging.
Very weird question. Is there any argument or any rationale, for example, for having the road crew, someone on. Our road crew put that, and I'm wondering if they're, if they're more accustomed to like making technical measurements, if they are. I, I don't know, I just, this sounds strange, but I am aware of other municipalities when it comes to things like, for example, indigent burial. Like a municipal crew or road crew will be involved in helping set something, and maybe not, but I'm just asking.
They take care of the roads at the cemetery and I think that's.
I mean, the cemetery is kind of my baby, I've spent a lot of hours down there. Trying to find flats and stuff, I, I can, it's okay.
I hear you. Alright, so down to burials, and I've almost done, I promise. Burials will be allowed on all days of the year, with the exception of New Year's Day, Memorial Day, Independence Day, Labor Day. Thanksgiving Day and Christmas Day, and I am, I just don't understand why that is.
Well, it was in the other cemetery bylaws, so I copied and pasted.
That is a great answer, and thank you for that, that's so, I just like, I, as someone who has, like. I have attended.
Why reinvent the wheel?
I'm not really sure why it's a role, but it's a role, and I don't think.
You know, in, in, in some funeral homes, it's, it's, excuse me, some cemeteries, they don't allow winter burials.
We addressed that elsewhere here, though, and I think, and like Memorial Day isn't in the winter, Independence Day isn't, I just think that we shouldn't. Telling families when they can bury their dead.
So, so I don't know this. It's just a theory of mine. So those holidays that you listed are. Well, they're, they're national holidays for the most part. So generally in a cemetery, you have. A town cemetery, there's a town official or a cemetery. Overseer or whatever, that's probably getting paid, so if they're working on a holiday.
Is there though, or is there not just a funeral home that's involved? Do we have a town official that shows up for everyone in the burials? Oh, right, so maybe that's why they did it, but I am interested in what panel does.
Well, that's right.
I can't figure out why we would not allow someone, if they have a funeral home who is willing to do it. And if the family would like to, for whatever reason.
I buried my dad on Columbus Day.
Yeah, I mean, bury their loved one on Christmas.
Who's gonna, right, and the question is, is. Do we have the town plow the roads for the cemetery if there's a funeral?
No, there's, no, there's no winter maintenance in the cemetery.
And that starts and ends when?
When it snows.
You know what, that's something that we probably, that's.
That should be in there.
That is in here, that is addressed in here, that if it is not feasible to bury someone because of weather conditions. Then that person, that family has to make arrangements until it is feasible. So I think we do address that, I think by and large, I think these are good bylaws, but I just think that.
We can just.
I agree.
But I think we should put in that the town will not plow the. Cemetery.
It's right above it, the town will allow burial during the winter months, weather and other circumstances permitting. In case circumstances are such that burial cannot be made, temporary entombage shall be the responsibility of the parties involved.
Correct, but what I was, what I was thinking about was not so much burial, because you might be able to bury somebody. But if you're, but if you've got a foot of snow in the cemetery.
Then you're not able to burn, who's gonna get there? Simple. Simple.
Okay.
No, seriously, it's simple, Carl. It's not our responsibility.
That's not our.
Someone, if someone wants to bury their, and they can bury their loved one on November twenty eighth, and there's, if they want to come in, have someone come in and plow the road and do it, then I think that should be.
I agree with you there, yes.
I think they should come to the cemetery commission.
And maybe that's.
Ask if they could.
Maybe that's what should be put in.
If there's going to, at least to notify the cemetery commission that you're going to plow the.
I, wait, I don't think we should let people plow other than.
No, but that's a circumstance.
Well, that's true, that's sound.
But we're very clear.
I, I say we just, you know, from whatever it is, December, whatever, to whatever they.
Whatever to whatever. And just say, you know what, the burial, there'll be no burials between December fifteenth or December.
I think you just say weather permitting.
But we, yeah, and I think you've done that, and I think you have already addressed this in a way that covers all these concerns.
Right.
If burials can't be made because of the weather, and no, you can't come in here, sir, and.
Funeral home helps families.
I guess, yeah.
This is for entombment and stuff. The winter burials are an issue, and that's completely normal to.
Yeah. And that's why they got coolers.
That's one.
Um, you'll know.
All right.
I don't want to run you on this one, okay?
I'm going to make it easy there. Um, all right, I will. This is, uh, last page, and it's second point here, second, um. But it's talking about the materials and vaults and containers and everything else, and what it has to be, great.
Yep.
That, we need to have that. And then I think that, um, it says, in an attempt to make sure you're sort of complying with law, Vermont law says no cemetery can make, can create a regulation that interferes with religious burial practices. Um, and then, Lord, it says, it is reasonable for the cemetery to charge additional fees for the maintenance of a grave that may need to be tamped down over time if no vault is used. Uh, great, I love it, and I, all I would like to do is just add a little bit of language. And like right before we get to the Vermont law, says no cemetery can create a regulation that interferes with religious burial practices, that just says, therefore, exceptions may be made for these requirements for religious reasons.
Okay.
And I'm happy to sort of interject that and get this back to you.
Yeah, that's perfect.
I just wanted to, I, I was grateful to see that in there. Um, my last question is, these last few points. Um, there's a reference to the commission. Um, if any monument, memorial inscription, ornaments, souvenirs, or floral arrangements, whether natural or artificial, shall be determined to be offensive, improper, or injurious to the, injurious to the appearance of the surrounding lots or grounds, the commission reserves the right. Which commission are we talking about? Because earlier, there's a discussion of the planning commission. Are we talking about our new cemetery?
It would be the cemetery.
Cemetery commission.
Yeah.
Great, okay, so I just want to insert.
The planning commission was in there, I think, for the establishment of cemeteries.
Beautiful, okay, I'll do that. Okay, that's it, sorry. It's, don't, don't worry. If you're going to make those notes and send it back to me, even if.
Even if you leave that with me, I don't care. Whatever is easiest for you.
You saved my handwriting, right?
Mine's pretty good.
Good, so we'll bring this back, probably, um, next meeting. Good, and I think we should be fine with it.
Yeah, I think it's great.
Okay, I need to add the letter of interest, um, from this left warden, trying to seek some funding for the emergent contaminants on the transfer station.
Um, so as you know, we have been doing PFOA sampling at the transfer station. There's, um, on the non-closed landfill part, there have been contaminants located around the transfer station. Um, we have a loan, a revolving loan, that we will receive fifty percent subsidies on, but it's at this point, over, over five hundred thousand, that will be cut and half, however, it's still a large chunk of money just in the investigation part of it. So they have to determine the extent of the contamination, and then they will look at how to remediate. So basically, VHB knows that Pownell, um, Vanessa, I don't know how, but that actually stands for, VHB been our consultant, since been working on doing the sampling and things like that. They are coming at the beginning of September to do an updated well report to you all. Um, but in the interim, they thought it would be great if we sent a letter of interest to the state, the A and R division, requesting that we be sort of kept in mind for future funding. There's a lot of funding available for emergent contaminants. And if we can sort of get in at the beginning saying, we really need help, so that the burden doesn't fall on our taxpayers when it comes to remediating this. Um, so there's a pot of money, and we just want to say, hey, please consider us, and that's what the letter says. It's a little more technical than that, but I, I think it's a great letter, and I think that's.
Yeah, anytime we can try to get money to alleviate taxpayer.
Yep.
Yes.
Out of pocket pay, that's, I think that's a great deal, as long as there's no repercussions down the road, and there doesn't, there doesn't appear to be, so.
Just going to go on letterhead and.
Yep.
Um, be a part of the board.
And thank you, like, that's, yes.
Yes.
Yeah, I was very thankful to them, um, for that.
Do we need a motion to move forward with that letter?
I'll make a motion that we move forward.
I will second that motion.
Any further discussion? Hold on, favorite. You public comment, Hannah? No hands? Perfect. I'll entertain a motion to enter into an executive for personnel.
Uh, go ahead.[1732.54]